Okay, colleagues, legislation to discuss in our pre-meeting conference, December 6th, 2023. We're starting a little after six, according to our city clock. Our first is an ordinance for an E and A transfer. It looks like it's within the police department's budget. Do we have anybody on our E and A that can give us a quick summary about this transfer? Mr. President or?
I'm chewing on docs.
Oh, having some candy, you need your sugar, I know.
Is there like an agenda that I could? Is this? Thank you, I'm sorry.
It's about rentals and equipment going into a subdivision repairs today.
Here's the issue right now. We have someone acting as budget director, filling in for that, literally rebalancing accounts based on invoices that are out and have been paid. And we need to make sure the money is actually in the accounts that they should be paid on. That is the explanation of some of these. Celeste can also expand on this.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, this is what we've been discussing, and we're asking for
more specific explanations on these, but right now, Sam's a budget director. We're in arrears on certain things and trying to, you know.
If you have a form, I can try to explain.
Maybe next time in the depart, the department has to send you a request for a summary request on this transfer. So maybe you can attach that to the E and A transfer after that, so at least we got something.
I mean, that's.
You know, that would something be a protocol that you might want to take into the future, all right?
Well, that's why I ran for mayor. Thanks, okay?
All right, Mr. President, I got you.
Yeah.
This is just police.
All right, council members, any other discussions on our first ordinance? Discussion's closed on ordinance number one?
Where are we going?
We're good. No, we can, we can pass it because I believe that the police department needs this in subdivision repairs anyway, so.
This needs nine votes to ordinate.
Yeah, is there any council members that need more information on this legislation?
No.
Okay, we'll move on. Our next piece of legislation is Commissioner Deeds for James A. Zeca. Everybody knows Mrs. Zeca, who was a former colleague. Any discussion on his Commissioner Deeds? Okay, discussion is closed on his Commissioner Deeds. Let's move to number three. Number three is a bond ordinance for a, is it bond ordinance or a ban? Looks like a bond ordinance the way it's written up. And it's for $1,120,000 in serial bonds. Is there anybody here from the finance that can speak about this?
Nobody's here from finance, but Stephanie or myself can speak about this.
Okay.
You want to start? You want me to start?
Baseball?
Yeah.
So, for the baseball field project, we went out and did a design build. We got the layout, the plans, the, what the proposition is. We were very pleased with the numbers that came back. Our estimates were $450,000, and the lowest bid here was $324,000. The intention of this was to offer the council an additional option instead of using the $470,000 for Sale Longo bleachers, but to, in a way, transfer that out and utilize a new ban for the baseball field. So, we came up with options. Instead of doing the bleachers for $470,000, we wanted to give alternative options that were available that might be more practical than additional bleachers. So, with that, we put the baseball field out. We had $324,000 returned. We assessed other areas in that, that corridor, and there was some need inside the skate park for no maintenance alternative options inside. We went and talked to some of the skaters who actually were there strictly from Albany, Rochester, Buffalo, coming to visit Utica strictly for the rumor they heard about the awesome skate parks. So, we asked them what they thought. They said they didn't really want grass, and they thought it wasn't practical if it doesn't get mowed. They thought crusher under stone would then just impose tripping hazards for them. Blacktop wasn't conducive because of the drainage area that's necessary. So, we came up with the idea of using rubber, just like the playground.
On the other side of it, yes.
It's safer for the interior surfaces. They also said it would be advantageous as it would give them more room to do standalone tricks that didn't require the ramps. So, with that, we got a quote for a hun, we asked a couple of companies, and we got a lowest quote for $112,000, which then still leaves $110,000 available to do other connectivity overages. And I say overages, but more, so additional needs such as fence installation around the skate park so ATV don't use the course, as well as external site restorations as the skate park project was strictly for the concrete of the skate park itself.
That's a good idea to put that rubber on.
So, the option was really just us trying to be more proactive, that it seemed that there was no need for additional bleachers. So, instead of ordering more bleachers with the $470,000, maybe providing the council, if they want to pass it, to do the baseball and other improvements.
Yeah, so here's, here's the thing, and I'll stop her here, and then we'll go on to the Valley View, so you guys know. So, you guys authorized the borrowing us $470,000 for bleachers for Sale Longo Field.
Years ago, correct?
Uh, no.
I think it was.
It wasn't on time. I was on the council, I don't believe.
I think it was. I think it, well, I don't know. But there was an authorize for $470,000 for additional bleachers for Sale Longo Field, that as the mayor's wrapping up, we pull all the bonds, get all the projects done, right? We looked at it. The mayor had asked us to evaluate options to upgrade the former baseball field at Proctor Park. This was one of the options. Instead of pulling this for bleachers, you can upgrade this baseball field, and the total amount of money would upgrade the whole corridor. So, so our options are, you know, we can pull for bleachers, or we can fix this field. We talked to the council president. We talked to the president of Little League, North Utica Councilman, in regards to Little League, and they were concerned that if we're going to spend money in East Utica, most of the Little League games are played in North Utica. So, we found a private solution that could work there. A private donor that said, if the city's willing to put equal money into its baseball fields, I'll put $250,000 into North Utica to make that one nice.
To recap on the baseball fields themselves, the, the intention of doing the Mount Carmel Little League field isn't necessarily to have a Little League field. It's to fix the area in the corridor. We have the skate park, the playground, the splash pad.
Another softball field.
And now we have a field that is not in use. We have ADA compliance that have all been mitigated. We have the field house on a five-year plan for the ADA and the rehab of the field house itself. So, the only missing link is the field. Whether it's recreational and people play kickball, or kids go with their parents and play catch, it's really just to give the baseball scene. So, with that, there was also Button Sean with, through Council Beatrice, Councilman Beatrice, who had helped with finding $125,000 to do work in South Utica, which was for Hinco Field, and any balancing money would go, could go towards North Utica, whether it was through paving the parking lot or any other improvements. As Marcus stated a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago by now, we met with Joe, Mike Gleamy, and Mike Gentile all regarding baseball, and we recognized the need for North Utica to be what gets the attention. So, I guess, full disclosure, my father, he was raised in Deerfield his whole life. My grandfather was heavily involved, was a philanthropist, and feels, and enjoyed baseball his entire life. We went to St. Peter's School. We went to the St. Peter's Church, and that school and that park was where not only I grew up, but he grew up. And so, to honor my grandfather, he is offering pending city contribution to put $250,000 into rehabilitating all three Little League, or all three fields, restoring the T-ball and the batting cage area, in-kind services such as DPW cutting some of the trees, and a pending mayor-elect next year adding ADA improvements to Seymour Park as well for next year's Phase Two portion. That park would be a complete new revitalized area for, to continue hosting Little League.
That's multiple purpose.
Multiple-purpose field. So, with that, we met with, with law. Charlie agreed that we can provide an easement access to a contractor for licensing, which would allow us to go on the site, do all of the work, and then return the finished product to the city. It would save money financially through prevailing wage. It would save money on design, overhead, survey. So, on top of saving probably $100,000 by using the bid that came out now because the project would start in December and finish in May, we would also see $250,000 worth of work being done in North Utica, including the fields themselves, the dugouts, and everything else that I had mentioned.
That's amazing what your dad's doing. That's absolutely amazing.
So, I think as a, when you look at the bigger picture of Button Sean's portion, private portion, and now a reuse of the $470,000 for bleachers to go towards this, we have touched, we have touched baseball in every district.
Part of the city. Absolutely. Well done, Stephanie. Well done.
So, first thing.
Before there's any discussion on this.
Yes.
Specific to the bond, when you bond out for, do a ban, or however you want to look at it, many times we say, if you don't use the money, we don't have to borrow the money. Okay? The $470,000 that we no longer need to utilize and bond for to install the bleachers would just, it's not a reuse. We can't do that because we're not installing those bleachers.
Right.
So, we're not bonding for that money. So, this is not a reuse of a bond. We are taking out a new serial bond for this purpose.
Right. It's replace would be my.
Replacement, yes.
It's not replaced either. It's a completely new serial bond for a different purpose because we aren't doing the bleachers. Period.
Well, as of now.
Technically, they can.
We can, I think. I don't, I think the ban was already pulled for the $470,000, which is why Diana had said it was labeled so specifically that although it's 100 feet away, we can't use it there because it's specifically stated for bleachers. So, the idea is to, like he had stated, eliminate and not use the bleachers under the contention of having a new ban to do this.
The bond.
Ban, thank, bond, yes, thank you.
Council members, this is a bond that needs unanimous. Is there, any council members that like to refer this to committee?
Yes. Wait, can I say?
Absolutely, Joseph.
Okay. So, when we're going through this here, this bond, what we're talking about now, this is also for the, it's not just for the project at Proctor Park. There's another part to it too, right?
Yes.
We didn't even mention.
We didn't mention that. You want us to?
Well, the, and the other, the other thing, yes. What I'm concerned about is, since you brought it up, we had our meeting, what, you know, we talked and everything, and when I requested to you guys to do was have two separate, like, you were going to do the $470,000 bond the way you guys wanted to express that. President Gleamy just touches it a different way just now too. The way I was under the impression is, if we don't get rid of that bond, you guys are going to put bleachers there that we don't need because that bond's already approved, okay, for bleachers. So, it was basically, the way, when I had the meeting and I walked away from it, I thought it was the greatest thing in the world. We already have a bond that's approved, okay, that we're not using. So, we'll take that money and just reuse that money to fix that field, and we have her father generous, and she didn't even speak of half of the stuff that was going to be on there. And I'm very glad that you brought that out tonight. But, you got, it didn't come across that way. Now, you got two separate, now you have this and with something else. So.
She can separate them. Diana, we can call her in and see if she's here, but she was trying to have them separate, but the way she requested them, they put it together.
Okay. So, we have a couple of weeks before our next meeting, I think. I'm, I'm, obviously, that part of it, I don't know the real other part of the bonding that much, but I know that's an important piece too. I think we should have a meeting or two to sit and go through, go through all this stuff to, to make it there. And like I said, I want to go on record publicly to say that I knew Stephanie since she was a little girl. She actually played on my basketball team at St. Peter's, and I know her father, and I think that is outstere, there's not too many people today that step up and do that kind of stuff. And I'm, I'm hopefully, hopefully that we can get through this one way or another. I know we have a new administration taking over in January, and I wouldn't want to be the person taking over not knowing what other funding and stuff is out there. So, I don't have, I don't have no problem with this part of it, but I think we should have a meeting to really talk about it and not discuss it.
Mr. Chair, do you want us to talk about the other aspect of this bond, or you want us to save that for the committee?
We can probably save it for the next meeting. We can call, Councilman DeBrenko can have a committee of the whole at our next council meeting, and we can finish, continue the discussion.
Well, wait a second. No, no, no. Hang on a second.
Go ahead.
Well, I think we should have the meeting before, before an hour meeting of our last meeting of the year. I think we should have a meeting sometime next week where it's going to be, we're not rushing through and out. This is pretty serious stuff, you know what I'm saying? And it's good stuff, and I don't, I don't want to see us, two things. I don't want to see us bond for something, and then we're, the new administration, we're stuck with stuff. And on the other hand, I don't want to see us not do something that's financially feasible, and we end up losing out on a private donor who's giving all this money. So, it's something that I think really needs to be really looked at, and you made me, you know, you guys agree with, you guys agree with me?
I do want to just explain something about this. The reason we put these projects out is that the contractors at the end of the year are usually trying to secure what they're doing in the spring. So, with that being said, on the baseball specifically, we, we put this out, and the typical lowest bidders are Central Paving and Central New York Construction. And the baseball that we got for EquipCo was about $50,000 less and $150,000 less than the two other bids that we got.
Is there time constraints on the award?
So, there is because of the scheduling. They were, we put it out with the intention of them starting in December for activation in May. And to touch on the other portion of the funding, it is for Valley View Parking Lot. We had a design in-house. We put it out to bid. Our anticipated budget was $650,000. That is what we went out for a ban just in case. That was what we thought it was going to come at. Our lowest bidder was Central Paving at $577,000. That will leave about $75,000 remaining that could assist with other Valley View banquet hall costs such as National Grid electric service costs that we are still patiently waiting to receive from National Grid. When you look at the scope of that project, the Valley View Parking Lot itself came in at 577. Our next lowest is 631, and our other bid was $859,000.
Wow.
This is also under the same timeline that they would start in December, and they would have the project ready by June, May or June, weather depending on asphalt plants. But this would be open, so that way now it would follow the schedule of Sale Longo's improvements. It would follow the schedule of the new restoration of the building, and we would be able to say we have Valley View fully operational with maximum 55 additional parking spaces, and for once, no constructions going on before golf season starts.
That's a project in hand.
So, if this does not pass, I can, can't promise anything, but I would assume based on the numbers when they're not hungry to get this, this will probably be above 650, and we will not have the additional 70 grand to use towards National Grid costs or any other site improvements. I'm not trying to sell it.
Because you can't last a minute.
I'm just trying to share the facts, that this is the intention, that they would also be starting in December and having this prepped and ready. And I will say, and Charlie can speak on this, Sale Longo is specifically asking that this be added into his agreement because he has been concerned since day one with parking. So, he is, I, did he sign it yet, or is he waiting to hear how this goes?
We've got the final draft. It's ready to be signed.
Ready to be signed. And he did include the sub-base and some work to be done in the near future.
Parking. So, one of the reasons.
But I could just add, by law, they can't award the contract until the bond ordinance has been adopted, correct?
So, the, just to summarize quick, Mr. Chair, I think what she's saying, because it, just to put in clearer terms, is it makes sense for us to go, it makes it awkward because the administrations are switching, but it makes us sense for us to go out to bid for some of these projects at the end of the year because you get a cheaper price when they have a, when they have a lower volume season.
Yeah.
When you, when you bid in the spring, and they got a million jobs to bid on, it's going to cost more to lock them in.
But don't change orders?
This, right here, we actually did alternates for deducts, so that way if in the event something on the site changes. But with this parking lot, the crucial component is also National Grid. We've had meetings for four months now trying to figure out the new load for the building, new power, if they're running it overhead, underground. As I'm sure you've probably noticed, we put a retaining wall in for sidewalks to make ADA connectivity into the golf course as well as through the parkway corridor, right at Valley View in the parkway. And Patrello, who is the contractor now for the improvements in the building and for the site work, as well as the subcontractors for the utilities, needed some contact of what's going on. Where are we putting the conduit? Where are we running the transformer? Where's the pad going? And so, without us putting a parking lot together, they had no direction on how to continue forward with a project that's already nearing.
You have to put the lines in before you put the pavement in.
And then we're going to pay money for them to move it. So, by having a contractor in place, they can coordinate those items. Otherwise, we shoot off the hip and we hope for the best, and it very well, we're going to be due diligent. We're doing the best we can with this proposed plan. But obviously, if this proposed project doesn't go, if something changes, then who knows what else will change and what costs. And National Grid, I can tell you right now, with what we've been working with on them, they've, they've been helpful, but they're short-staffed. They have rescheduling issues because of weather on other more important items to them that, we're coming up with a plan assuming this is the proposed concept. And so, without any certainty, it, it increases our risk of maybe having to spend more for any other realignments or of any sort.
Are they like, exclude any change orders?
Right now, there's no changers because the project doesn't start. Typically, a change order is after the fact. But yes, we've looked through this thoroughly, but as.
I look at current supply, and I'm always, I'm always seeing like, number 15 change order, number 20.
They do, we, we should be grouping them together so it doesn't seem so significant. Sometimes it's 800, 1,200 bucks. But I do understand, and I'm sorry I didn't answer your question more directly. We listed alternates as a deduct, so that way in the event we start something on the site work in January, and we realized, oh, we have overages, we can simply eliminate the, the, the top coat, the fence.
The thing I would add.
So, there's things that we can take out to make sure there's no overages.
The thing that I would add is, they're designed to be, because the bids came under what the initial estimated amount was.
Which is phenomenal.
It's designed to be, there's essentially a large contingency. It's designed to be flexible enough to, to absorb any change orders, number one. And number two, you got to be more rigid on a project like this because it's connected to a bond.
Well.
You know, change orders.
Right. We can't predict if they'll happen, but I guess.
It happens all the time.
But we put it out with the intention that we can reduce items, so that way as we go through, we can use that money for.
If they're uncertain, you know, and all of a sudden, like, $200,000 or more on a change order, they think, where's this coming, where's this, where's this coming?
Gene Senior did the design, and he incorporated everything.
There's unknowns on sites. I mean, that's, that's, they, they, they run into a, it depends on the job, you know? But I understand what you're saying, but it's a little more rigid because it's a bond, and we built ourselves some flexibility.
631 and 859,000. Well, that was the first one we opened, so there was a little fear.
I just, can I just mention one thing about?
Mr. President?
The two projects. The Valley View project is, you know, pretty much almost a completion. So, that should be the priority discussion. The baseball field is an entire separate discussion, not only because it's not started yet, but of how it was anticipated on being used prior, and a lack of anticipation of it being able to be maintained and/or used moving forward. But this Valley View project, if these monies could not be found within ARPA, because this was an ARPA project, the remaining ARPA, completing the Valley View project and making that a success should be the absolute priority because we're so far along. We do have someone who wants to manage the facility, who, as Corporation Councils discussed, they're close to signing a contract on. So, the, the Valley View situation does need to be priority.
So, Mr. President, you're in favor of this in your future.
Well, I'm not saying the bonding. I'm talking about the projects.
We get the message.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The projects.
Gotcha. You're in favor.
Those are.
All right. Council members, is there, is, if it's not unanimous, of course, it has to go into committee. Joseph Beatrice, you're the one that, go ahead, I'll listen.
Um, you guys, how do you guys feel? You feel we should have a meeting?
The question I had was, what's the hurry? Why do it? But they explained that the contractors are, they have to set their scheduling up for next year. That's why they're doing it now. So, that was my question. Couldn't we wait when we do the other bonding, when we do the capital? But apparently, we can't because they're setting up their, their job orders for next year, correct?
And I don't remember, yes. And I, and, well, they are, we're putting this in, but we put verbiage in here that part of their price includes knowing that this has to start in December. So, they both have completion dates of May.
Once they commit.
What, yeah, this is do what you can now, work in the winter, do the demolition, get the site ready. This needs to be done by May.
That's for both projects?
For both projects have the same.
It lacks in the prices.
And that's, the project is also time, so. And I think, I don't know offhand, do you guys know how long after we open a contract can, do you have before you award it or not? Because these were received in November 9th and November 22nd.
I think it's 60 days.
That's, I thought 60 as well.
They have to hold their, they have to hold it off. After 60 days, they can, they can withdraw. They can just vote back.
Councilman Beatrice.
I guess, after listening to the common council president speak, obviously, the other part of the bond affects my area in a great deal. I probably think we should go along with it, but I still, I'm not opposed to us sitting down one other time, spending an hour, hour and a half, and go over all the details like on Monday. And our next, obviously, it's not a problem if we wait till our next meeting to approve this.
That's the 20th?
Yes.
I don't think so.
Okay. So, just to be totally safe on that, but, like I said, I would, these guys all seem like they're for that. Common Council President, he, I listened to what he just said, but it's up to you guys.
Okay either way.
You're okay with it? Everybody else is okay with it?
Okay.
We got, Sam wasn't here though, so.
Put it in committee.
Huh? Put it in committee and have a meeting to vote on it next week?
If we're going to do it, let's schedule a meeting right now.
Right now.
Next Wednesday, 4:30, I'm good.
Oh, you want to do Wednesday, or?
A week from today?
A week from today at 4:30?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep. What's the date?
The 13th. 13, 1-3.
I'd have a, I'd have a question for, just a process question probably for the president. So, if we put it in committee, we have a committee in the 13th. It still can't be voted on until the next council meeting, right?
No. No. If you cause a special meeting for the 13th.
It could be voted on at a meeting, but a committee meeting, you cannot vote on.
So, why can't, why don't?
Why don't you have a special meeting just for this?
Why don't we have the meeting on Monday?
You can have a special meeting and vote and get it.
Your next meeting is December 20th.
Right.
So, and to avoid hosting a special meeting for players where you can vote prematurely, if we have the meeting on the Monday, then you could vote on December 20th.
That's what he's saying. What, what Councilman Miola is saying, you can call it a special meeting. Probably take care of a substantial amount of your, your December 20th meeting at that special meeting, and then it's the council's prerogative to maybe cancel it December 20th.
Right. If they feel fit to, you know, prolong and ask more questions, or we can vote on it the 13th, Joey.
Okay. So, let's just, we'll come up with a date for the meeting.
I'm not here on the 13th, but you don't need.
Any issue?
Just a point.
Are you discussing a special meeting?
You'll still need a two-thirds vote.
It's a bond. Yes, six votes.
Wait, where are we discussing?
Technically, you have to be introduced to the floor, so you still can't vote on it.
And we need public announce, public 72 hours?
Yeah.
So, Monday would be okay for 72 hours.
If you introduce this on the floor, then all these things make sense.
Are you good with that, Mr. President?
You can do it in committee.
Do you have time Monday?
I'm not okay with that at all.
You can't come Monday?
Yeah, but you didn't listen to everything she just said.
I don't know. I would have to.
Well, you didn't listen to what she just said.
No, it wasn't going to make a difference.
Yeah, it was, but whatever.
Mr. President, if you don't want to call the meeting, we can do something else. Your call.
There's no way I could check that right now, if we can do that.
Would you like to check it after, and we can know where to put it? We'll put it in committee for now?
Sure, but I'm just curious why this is being introduced tonight, and we don't have a committee meeting on it, and then deal with it at the, the.
Right.
I had no problem in bringing it to the committee meeting on the 20th and vote on.
I don't understand why I don't just use the regular schedule.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that, but...
Right.
Okay.
I'm good with that, too.
Stephanie, you okay with the twentieth?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Councilmen DeBraingle, five o'clock, the twentieth, we'll have a committee meeting on it.
So we're gonna bring it to the floor, it's gonna go in committee, we're gonna have a meeting a week from Wednesday.
I thought it was the thirteenth.
Okay, so I think it sounds like...
I wanted it four-thirty, so they don't have to go home, come back, it's convenient for the department heads and everybody else.
But you don't have a meeting on the thirteenth, you have a meeting on the twentieth.
Right, right. That's what they're suggesting. Just a committee.
Yeah, that's all you need.
Committee, a whole meeting.
On the thirteenth?
On the thirteenth.
Yeah, okay, good. Right.
No, he's saying, he's gonna have a committee meeting on Wednesday, and you can't vote on it.
Okay, okay. All right, just a committee meeting for December thirteenth. Is any council member that can't make December thirteenth committee meeting? Okey-dokey. Like I said, why don't we just have it for the twentieth? Have it at five o'clock, before our council meeting.
Because I think it's gonna be longer than that, and...
If it's the only thing on the agenda, it's gonna be blowing over an hour, Joey?
I don't know.
All right.
It seems like there might be other stuff on our agenda we'll want a committee meeting for, too, so maybe as we go.
So we need to have it on the thirteenth.
All right, then, let's have a committee meeting thirteenth at five o'clock, Councilman DeBraingle?
Yeah.
Those of us who can make it?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty, okay.
Yeah.
Everybody agree with a four-thirty committee meeting, December thirteenth?
Yes.
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty? Oh, okay, do the best you can. Any questions for a four-thirty? Could you schedule that, clerk? December thirteenth, okay. This legislation be referred to committee, proposal number, ordinance number three. Our next piece of legislation is a contract agreement with our city zoo. We have a very highly spoken about attorney here, Charlie Brown, who's been with the city for over a couple of years, just a couple of years. And if there's any questions with the agreement, Charlie, would you like to give them a quick summary to start with, and then pose for questions, sir? Please, give them a quick summary about the agreement.
Well, as you know, the Zoo Zoological Society's been operating the zoo for, I don't know how many years. Okay. And we've been, frankly, without a contractor, there's never been, well, there was a formal contract that expired in nineteen ninety-nine.
You did look that up, wow.
And we've been going, I did. And things have been working along well, but we really need to have a formal...
Updated contract, yeah.
And it's taken about two years, but we've put together, basically, it's what we've been doing all along, which has worked out very well, it's just we're formalizing it. And if you have any questions about the operation of the zoo itself, Andrea Heath is here from the Zoological Society, and she'll be happy to answer those.
Okay, council members, did you have a chance to read the agreement? Are there any questions?
I have a question for Charlie.
Last?
So, I just have a memory, very clear memory, of two years ago, I mean, give or take two years ago, Kevin Rowett saying, we just signed an agreement with the zoo.
Never said we just signed an agreement, we've been working on this for probably three years now, yeah. And we've been, actually, like, the last six months has been more working out the boundaries that went back to the seventies. And it's, yeah, I mean, there hasn't really been any controversial issues or anything, it's just a matter of getting everybody on the same page, understanding what it is, and then getting it written.
Anything else, sir? Any other colleagues have any questions about the agreement with the zoo?
But why now?
It's been...
No, I mean, eleventh hour before, you know what I mean, before the new...
Well, as I said, we've been doing this for, working on this for like, three years, and the, we were pretty much ready to go, at least six months ago, again, the boundary issue came up, and that just got resolved, like, three weeks ago.
You mean literally the physical boundaries?
Yes.
Describing the space.
Right.
Yes.
Because again, that went back to the seventies, and things have changed.
Mark, any additional questions? It's only a resolution, right?
It's a resolution, you could vote on it tonight, if you got any questions, you know.
The county does do a lot for the zoo.
The county contributes financially to the zoo much more than, the legislature doesn't really contribute anything.
Absolutely. We do some plowing, that's about it.
Yeah.
That was all part of the sale of Uta Water Works.
Yeah, that was part of the deal with...
No different than the odd, there's a few amenities in the city that were sold through Water Works in one nineteen ninety-five. There were agreements...
Yeah, it's a contract.
Through that, where the county did provide, it were to be certain budgets and things like the zoo. So that's, that's why that is, you know.
Is there any other discussion on the contract?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I think that the city's contribution includes up to two million, so do we have a final dollar amount on how much that we've given through the American Rescue Plan to the zoo?
I don't, Andrea, isn't that project completed?
Yeah, but I believe that the city's portion that contributed to two million has already been out there received, I believe we're done.
Okay, so that I would like to have the actual dollar amount, not up to two million, from what we've actually given.
Gives you an idea how long this has been in the works.
No, yeah, I mean, but it...
It's got a reciting that it's going to be done, and it's been done.
Yeah, no, I know, but if it's done, yeah, I think that whereas should be stricken, yeah, that...
Because it's just a where.
Mike, I didn't approve any of the American Rescue Act plan, okay? So anything that I approve, I don't want my name anywhere near it. No offense to anybody, but if you guys feel comfortable doing that, I don't. With that said, if it's finalized, I think it just needs to be specified that the city's contribution, dollar amount, needs to be specified, that there's no more cost incurred with that through those dollar amounts. The other question that I have is, the Utica Zoo shall not make any capital improvements on premises costing fifty thousand dollars or more without the prior written consent of the city engineer. Who, obviously, we don't have a city engineer right now, so who does make that determination until a city engineer is appointed?
Well, we do officially have a city engineer.
Who is it?
That would be, I forgot his name.
Paul Romano?
Paul Romano.
But Paul Romano is contracted out, or is he...
Yeah.
Okay, so technically, I mean, he might be the city engineer, but he's contracted out, not as a city employee. So I think that just needs to be clarified.
At some point, we're gonna have a...
Right, but I mean, at some point, if we approve this, I mean, a city engineer could approve some, I mean, that's all I'm saying, is that it just needs to be clarified before we approve any... If we don't have a city engineer, then who makes that determination?
Well, we do have the city engineer.
But we don't, I mean...
But we do.
So, I mean, okay, so then a contracted city engineer, that's all the guided underneath there, so the title of city engineer is not what Paul Romano holds, is that what you're saying?
No, no, so hold on, can I have the floor for one second?
Because I'm president? I'm kind of confused.
Mike Mahoney was the deputy city engineer, because we are required to have a city engineer.
A hundred percent, I understand that.
The company that Paul Romano works for...
Right.
Is our quote, "city engineer by contract," period. That's literally the city engineer. It is.
Acting city engineer. I mean, I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying. But although, he just holds the title of city engineer. I mean, that, do you get, I mean, who, is he in our table of organization under city engineer?
No.
Paul Romano, okay, so then technically, by definition, he's not the city engineer, he's contracted out to hold the title of city engineer. But in our table of organization, is Mike, is Paul Romano the city engineer?
No.
Okay, then that's not the city engineer. Right, okay, so, is Paul Romano the title, under definition by charter, the city engineer?
Ramble.
Right.
That's my point, it's not Paul Romano, it's ramble.
Okay, then it still needs to be clarified.
And I think you're both right, but I think regardless, if there's no city engineer, you're just looking for who in the event would you list?
Yeah.
Then it needs to specify that.
Your questions are good.
Okay.
I'm just trying to help.
The agreement was written up, Charlie, between you and the zoo, I'm assuming?
Between me and...
You and the members of the zoo board?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Of course, you would have to bring us back to the zoo board to amend the agreement, sir?
Yes.
Okay. According to my colleague, she has a lot of questions on it, can you refer those questions to Charlie Brown, so she can amend, I guess, the agreement appropriately, so we can move it in? At this time, we'll put it in committee until we see an amendment, I guess.
Okay.
All right? It is a resolution?
Yes.
It, maybe we'll have a discussion off-table, and we'll find out where to go from there, but at this time, we'll move it in committee, Charlie. All right?
Maybe we should have the five o'clock...
The only thing I plan to do...
Yes.
Is, I'll take out the language about the city's contribution.
The twelve million, yes?
Yeah.
Twelve million.
And that would be a agreement.
If you want to have the mayor be the one that makes the decision, I can change that from city engineer to the mayor, you'll always have the mayor.
Yes, that is true. Would my colleague be satisfied with those amendments?
I mean, it's up, it's up, I mean, whoever, it could say acting city engineer, but I mean, until we put somebody in the table of organization, I don't, I have no problem putting the mayor in there, Samantha, would you? I, whatever you guys decide, whatever language you think would be fitting for them.
All right, Charlie, can you make those amendments, and we'll see if we can move it forward?
Make those amendments, and I'll sign them back down and attach it to the...
Thank you.
And this agreement's not gonna cost us anything, we already paid our...
Absolutely, it's already done through our...
It's already done, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Charlie. And it's all, the only other thing that I will say is that it's also gotta be amended,
because it says this contract shall be affected as of April first, two thousand twenty-two.
That was to start the clock on the term.
Right, so, but just...
Again, I said, this has been in the works.
Right, but I just, I mean, if I'm approving something, I don't want to backdate it eight months ago, so if we could, just have it say...
You're just setting the clock for the fifteen-year term. You needed a day, sir.
Okay.
For a budget here.
Charlie, can you make those amendments and bring it to us?
Okay.
All right.
You want to start a different date?
I mean, it would start, I would imagine, the day that we approved it.
I don't know if it's a continuation of one or the other one.
Then it doesn't matter when it ends, if it's a fifteen-year contract, it could be fourteen years and six months, I mean, that doesn't make a difference, but I'm not gonna approve something back to April, that should be approved the day we approve it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Charlie, you all set with those amendments?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you get those amendments done, and I will move that piece forward. Our resolution that, of course, signs with that, of course, would be resolution number four, and we'll wait until Charlie's amendment to contract, and we'll somehow get that into our record. Okay, Mr. President? Our next piece is an ordinance for another bond. This is for two-point-five million for paving. We didn't, did we do this bond prior?
No, we did not.
We did not?
I can explain.
Mr. President, you have a floor?
I'm not responsible for this, but I'm just gonna explain, right? Oh, so, we did start reconciling all of the capital projects and the ARPA projects. Through that, and with the assistance of the Controller's Office, as we're reconciling everything, it was found that the paving contracts were not aligned up with funding, is the best way I could put it. I don't know, we don't have the, we don't have a budget director right now, right? But the reality is, we don't have the funds to cover the awarded contracts that did the paving already this summer. I'm the reporter of this right now, I'm just trying to explain what happened.
Nobody thinks it's your fault, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just, no, I'm just trying to explain it, you know, I mean, so, you know, that's...
They didn't go for banned or anything?
No, nothing came to this council. The budget director did not work with the Controller's Office to bring that to us.
That was for two years ago.
Right, but not this year, not for this year's paving, we didn't bond for anything. How is that legal, Mr. Brown?
The twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four...
Yeah.
Was banned in August of twenty-twenty-three.
We banned for it, we just haven't bonded for it.
There's two million that was done for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and again, I'm also not any budget director or anything, I have to spend the bridge between engineer.
Yeah, I'm still waiting for this myself.
Okay, well, I've been checking and not sleeping about it, because I feel responsible, even though it's not me.
Yeah, likewise, likewise.
So what I have found was that the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, two-point-five million, from whenever it was agreed that we have to spend five million a year, I don't know, was it four years ago?
That's way back.
Five years, however, however long ago it was.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, they borrowed two million in August of twenty-twenty-three. The year prior, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, they did not borrow money, because it was the hope that we didn't need to, maybe use ARPA, I don't know the original reason, it was just a, it is not sustainable for the city to keep banning two-point-five million every year to meet the five-million-dollar goal, so in an effort, they were trying to skip a year. And now, it is a year and a half later, and we have budget concerns with prior expenses that this request for two-point-five million is to clean up and absorb the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three overages. But I can't call it overages, because it's technically the five million that the council approved to spend.
Exactly.
There was five million the council approved...
It was a voter referendum, so the president approved it as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know...
Yeah, suffer from all that.
Whoever it was, there was five million, the budget only had the two-point-five with CDVG.
The other issue that I want to put out there is that I requested, you know, knowledge on the current paving contract this year. I was told we're probably somewhere between one-point-two and one-point-four over on that, which budgetarily, if you look at the budget, we said we were gonna pay five-point-five million dollars, right? Apparently, that's not the case either, so...
And the stress is also that in March or April, Diana will need to, or Controller's Office will need to come down again to ask for two-point-five million for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, to meet the five-million-dollar paving.
All right, Councilwoman Celeste, she has some moves for the council.
So on May seventeenth of this year, we bonded two million dollars for paving. It was inside the capital project of nine-point-seven, nine-five-five-eighty...
But that's not the paving that we're covering.
They're talking twenty-two and twenty-three a year.
They're talking the previous year.
This year...
This year, you're talking about the prior year?
Yeah, 2022.
2022, 2023.
Okay.
Okay. Council members, I do believe we should have a cost study run on our paving before we move on this. Does everybody agree?
Doesn't that, doesn't that, if this was for the previous week.
Oh, I know it's done.
It's done.
I know it's done. Point of order, Mr. President? Um, I have the floor.
Well, technically, Celeste still does, so.
Thank you, thank you, sir. So, you're saying that when we bonded $2 million in May of this year, it was for 2022?
No, it was for this year.
2023.
But we didn't do it for the year we passed before.
Right, but we did it just this, just six months ago. We bonded 2 million for '23, '24.
Which is the same concept that Controller said that come April, May, she'll be doing the same thing for '24, '25.
So, they'll be in the hole for around 2.5 million.
It's, it's not, what they're saying is, they found that they didn't pull enough money in 2022, 2023.
Right.
To cover the paving bills.
No, it's, what it sounds like. What it sounds like is, we're supposed to bond for 2.5 million every year, and the year before last, they figured they were going to use other money and didn't bond for it.
That was ARPA money.
I remember that, I remember that.
Yes, and they said they were going to cover it with ARPA.
I remember what Joe was saying, which is that we were told, hey, guess what?
We're not going to have to bond.
Exciting, we don't have to bond.
The ARPA projects went over.
Yes, and there's also, the, the ARPA schedule that Heather provided with, Heather provided to us was $2 million in paving, hence the reason why we didn't bond for that. So, obviously, somebody spent a lot more money in ARPA than they anticipated, hence the reason why Valley View is probably costing us about $7 million now on a couple of other projects, that they were totally irresponsible with their spending and their projected cost to it. So, now we need a cost analysis study done on a paving project that we knew that we already had, rather than being responsible with the ARPA funding and setting aside those additional costs, not to have to bond for that. So, I mean, those are, those, you want a cost analysis study done, it should be on the ARPA funding that was spent.
So, the Monday after the election, I requested all these accounts be reconciled. That's in part why all of this is starting, you know, that's, that's.
I'll come do it.
I mean, that's, we're, they're going through the numbers. They're doing all the transfers. Again.
I do feel confident with all the ARPA. All of the consultants' projects are all encumbered. All the change orders and everything is known. The cash allowances are accounted for. Unfortunately, with paving, there hasn't been a directive and a situation. We lost a department head mid-construction season. There's been a learning curve with Austin managing the paving, and unfortunately, there were some hiccups where he was out in the field and he made the decisions on the spot there. That wasn't the best interest of the road and the constituents, and unfortunately, it came with an expense that we did not know at that time. And so, those decisions are made while crews are sitting there and millings are happening and the trucks coming, and you have to make an on-the-spot decision. We do understand, I'm speaking for him, that he realizes that change orders need to happen before the work starts. So, that was a learning curve that desperately needed to happen, and I think it is clear, still clear in our office moving forward.
Well, don't regard this as a learning curve, someone should be sanctioned, et cetera. There was a lack of oversight.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
There was a lack of oversight.
That's exactly it.
You guys were in the field getting the jobs done that you were requested to do.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
On the bright side, we've got a lot of paving done.
Yeah. And I, I just like, I just like to say for the record that I think the former budget director has a different recollection on some of these things, and you might want to talk to her.
Well, the point is, we are where we are.
Yeah, right.
The work has been done.
Yes.
Bills either need to be paid for, or half, or the money needs to be allocated to the appropriate account so they can be paid for, one or the other. That's the situation we're in right now. It's just real time.
Well, Mr. President, in my viewpoint, I understand that, okay, the money's not there for 2022 and '23 paving, but we still should have a cost study. We like a cost study and disbursements, including any ARPA money that was allocated from, let's go from 2021.
Right, that was my question, why?
I want to see from '21, '22, '22, '23, and '23 and '24, what was bonded and what was used for ARPA money. The council needs that to move forward in our bonding. Is that okay? Can you get that to us?
That is, there's five people in my office right now, and I'm doing the best that I can.
No, I'm not, if, 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 in other words, if you want us to bond, which I understand fully agree.
Right now, I can call Diana. She's probably still working. She has $2 million worth of bills on her desk, and we're mandated to pay these within 60 days. So, I don't know if this is truly something that can wait, if you want my honest opinion. I can go walk over and see if Diana's available, but I don't think this is something that can wait, if you're asking my opinion.
I met with the Controller's Office. They said, while they are reconciling everything and attempting to, let's say they locate 1.5 billion dollars within those accounts that could be used for this, then this full 2.5 is not taken up, right? They just use one.
And I think there is some overages.
Yeah.
Exceeding this, that I would have to imagine the 2.5 would be.
Yeah, as do I, because when they said that, I'm like, only we could be so lucky, right? But that's, we are dealing with something that has already been laid.
He won't say that too loud. Let him, I'm going to be quiet on it.
I, I, I.
I'm smiling because this is just the reality of the situation.
But I, I think the reality of the situation is, is that, you know, when people ask for ARPA funding requests and details, and specifically, and you have to foil information, and you're not getting that information accurately, I think is, is a huge problem. I mean, I had a foil for the ARPA funding spending, and I think that that's extremely infuriating, that I've got to go now tell constituents, we blew through $64 million. Now, we got a $1.2 million bond to finish the park and a $2.5 million to finish paving.
And it's my frustration.
So, I mean, that's not a me problem, that's a them problem. And until you get some answers, I don't care how long it takes and if we get penalized or not. Not my problem.
So, would you get Diane as soon as possible, probably to our next, I don't know if she's there, you can go take a look, and you want to do it?
She's physically here on standby, so.
They don't got enough time.
Is she here for this? If she's not here?
They got five minutes.
She is. She said she was waiting, working.
Mr. President, it would go into your meeting, your call.
I mean, we have to deal with the business of the city, right?
Yes.
So, why don't we, in the meantime, get through the rest?
Let's get the rest of it until she gets here, okay.
All right.
All right, colleagues, we're on another E and A transfer, which is ordinance number six. Looks like some pool construction service.
This one, we can explain.
Okay, Mr. President, you have the floor.
During the councilperson friend did test this as well, can we just start explaining that they were doing the pool inspections and the electrical grounding on the pools was not proper, and they had to fix it?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so.
That was pretty important.
This is something important. Is there any issues with passing ordinance number six unanimously?
The only question that I have, then, who did the original lining for the electrical?
No, I think the ordinance changed for the electrical and the grounding of the pools, because that was a new.
So, who did the original work for what we're correcting now?
Wow, you're going.
I think it was age, I think it was like.
Just, oh, so it just aged out? It wasn't any repairs that we did of recent?
Yeah, this was, so it did work and screwed it.
All right, I just want, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that was inspection of the pools and areas, and it was found to be. The required, the codes department electrical inspector did the inspection. The code has since changed since they put it in. It's one of those things that can't grandfather because it's electrical, so they had to use more expensive, higher-capacity, safer conduit for the electricity than they had originally had to use when they built the pool.
Okay.
No, this was, yeah, this was just me.
Are there any additional questions? Is any council member opposed would have to go into committee? Okay, number six is completed. We do have an intersection or stops required, sponsored by Councilwoman Celeste Friend. Would you like to go over your intersection ordinance?
So, the first two are just codifying stop signs that were already there. The proper signage is already in place. We're just adding it to the code. And the third one is what we discussed at the last meeting, where the president discussed sort of where we would need to prohibit some parking.
Mr. Mark, you have the floor.
I answered nothing, no. We asked two weeks ago for a traffic study in the whole or part of the harbor. We, we got that. All of a sudden, this is showing up now? This is showing up now? Where's the, where's the police, where's the?
It's not showing up. The stop signs are already there.
I know, but it's supposed to be a trap stay on this big island.
They're new stop signs? They're new stop signs?
No, the stop signs were already there.
Oh, okay.
No, they got, they're probably a week ago. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so they're new stop signs.
But they weren't done by the city. They were done by the company that did the island.
Okay, so.
So, they were never legislated for, so.
So, then we can't talk to this until we hear from the other thing, correct?
Wait, wait, wait. I'm assuming that either the chief okayed it? Is that correct, Mr. Holt? Well, you got, you got the officer here that went to the intersection. Would you like him to speak, sir?
So, the, the, first and foremost, the police department doesn't do traffic, traffics. We, we do dashboard surveys for public safety reasons. We are not traffic engineers. A professional, so the engineering department, and I don't know, I don't know how the, the roundabout came apart, but the traffic, the engineering department, when there is, you know, an issue of flow or control, a professional, you know, traffic engineering, engineer would have to take a look at that and actually do a, a survey and put out a report. From my knowledge, that was done, and I don't have a copy of the, of the, of the report, but it was done, and that's how the, that's how the roundabout came, came about, or whatever, whatever that is.
No, we had, the CNS study and report that was given to us the last night.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that, yeah, so that's, that's how that came about. Now, the police department was asked, we know that there's, there's, because of that report, there's stop signs that are in place right now, and they need to be legislated. So, we went up and we took a look and said, yes, this, this does make sense, and, and we need it for public safety. Those stop signs make sense for public safety, so.
You got that out on there.
Yes, so, we put the legislation together for that and submitted it. And then, the other question was, is there anything else that, when we do our dashboard, it's called a dashboard survey, a windshield survey, take a look at the, simply taking a look at the traffic flow, taking a look at the, the roadways, and saying, hey, is there any public safety concerns here that a, that a police officer, not a traffic engineer, can take a look at and say, hey, we might want to consider this? And the, the, what they saw was, you're going to need some, you're going to need some parking restrictions there. And so, they added to the legislation the parking restrictions.
But nobody knew in that area. I saw the emails that came from your police department. All these emails that came from all the people that looked at that area. They knew nothing about this one. Nobody knew about it.
I, I really honestly can't talk, I mean, I just don't, I don't have the knowledge about how, how that, how that came about. I just, I know that there was a professional traffic engineer that took a look at it, recommended it. That's, I, I don't know the company that did it.
It was the N and S.
CNN. CNN. And so, that's how that came about. Within that, within that study, that's how the stop signs, that's why the stop signs were put in place, because they were part of the study. And we were just asked to go up and take a look at what's existing now, and to see if there was any other recommendations that we had regarding the dashboard survey for public safety reasons.
And that's the reason we have no other choice now, but to put a stop sign in front of some of these drag lights.
Again, I mean, I, you know, but that's, that's.
All right, guys, I'd like to just, Councilwoman, Katie Ilo had the floor, has the floor right now?
Well, my thoughts on it, I know some people have mixed feelings on this and they want to remove it, but even if we do remove it, it makes sense to legislate the stop signs that are there to, and like, I encourage safety as it is.
Well, you've got an option right now. Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, the mayor and the chief, 30 days, 60 days on the stop sign?
60 days?
How many?
90. 90 days.
90 days, if I'm right, okay. They have 90 days, so I think the council should do a 90-day or 60-day period, whatever they feel comfortable with, and then reexamine this in the future. Right now, our police department says this is needed for this intersection at this time. I think we have to take their lead.
Right.
I agree with you, but, okay, Joey, you have the floor. Mark, you're, you're absolutely correct with that.
Everybody knew nothing about this, in that area.
I agree with you, Mark. I agree with you.
Okay, so.
You're right.
Can I, I have the floor?
Joseph.
So, basically, these two pieces, and I have.
Three pieces.
The three pieces, they need to be passed.
No, they don't have to be passed.
Not passed, but we need to do the 30 days, or they need to be there for safety. This is not my area, so I just want to clarify this. This is all a result of that island being put in there?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank, no, I don't have anything else.
So, if my colleagues wouldn't mind put these three pieces in committee until further discussion is needed on the traffic. Everybody agree? Okay. Let's go back to, that was the last piece. I'm assuming those are.
Do you understand that you're asking the chief to put in a 90-day?
Yes.
Experimental traffic regulation.
Yes, absolutely.
To legitimize the stop signs as they exist.
The public safety commissioner has to put in the request for 90 days, not the chief. The public safety commissioner is the one that approved the island.
No, the chief also, the chief has the authority, Samantha.
Right, but he, I mean, he don't want to get involved in it. The public safety commissioner did it and approved it. Let the public safety commissioner do it.
There was some, it was a discrepancy.
Does the mayor know about it?
No, he said he didn't.
How, you knew about it?
He knew enough about it that it was an idea. He, his, his statement to us was that he had explained that it would be marked with the paint, and then somewhere in the mix of Mike being out and Austin compiling, it got done, it started. He wasn't under any pressure.
Got done without approval.
So, I, I don't know the answer, but that's what he told me.
Saying that something happened in this city and he didn't know about it?
He's saying that, Marcus, I mean.
I mean, I, I.
You're in the meetings.
No, listen, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't speak, I don't, I don't speak for the mayor.
You're stealing my line.
Right? The mayor can speak for himself.
And I'm asking, did the mayor know about it? Celeste's saying yes.
I'm, I'm saying, when we had ARPA meetings, we discussed this.
Or did you, I know, I'm asking my question for Celeste. That was what was originally asked for, because she said yes. I said, did the mayor know about it?
He knew about the concept.
When we did the painting, well over like a year and a half ago.
So, how does something like that get approved without the administration? Who's signing the checks for that money to even be approved for that?
The checks goes to the Controller's Office, Samantha. You know that.
We discussed.
So, where did that money come from then?
Council ARPA.
Council ARPA. Who approved the council ARPA funding?
The mayor.
Okay, so then.
Did he approve the, did he approve this, did he approve, did he approve this specific project? According to the mayor, he said no.
Not knowing about it.
So, that was her $200,000?
All right, the issue is the islands there, like, like council members. Let's move forward, let's move forward. The issue is the islands there, okay? We have recommendations from our police department for signage. Let's go forward with the recommendations until the council feels to either remove it or go back. That's up to them. Let's, right now, we can't destroy the project, but we have to move forward and have pedestrian and people's safety right now. So, I think that's, that's predominant of our issue right now. We have to move forward with that. So, we'll put the, absolutely, council, council. Let's move forward and put that piece in, those three pieces in committee, and then we'll go from there after the 30 days. Charlie, can you make, can you move forward with that, with the, either the chief or the mayor, whatever you want?
It would be the chief.
All right.
The 90-day one.
Going back, Stephanie, let's go back to ordinance number five, I'm sorry, the bonding stuff.
She's not here.
She's not here?
She's not here.
Oh, me.
All right, she's not here?
I just called it. She did want to say that the, the.
Right.
She said the.
Excuse me, I know that Stephanie wants to say something.
She said that the bills were work that was performed in October and signed early first week of November.
So, it was just done a month ago?
The bills.
So, when was the work done?
October.
So, we knew that we were spending that amount of money, knowing that we didn't have the money.
Sam, I don't do the paving. I don't know.
I know what you're saying, I just have, I'm.
Trust me, I'm just as frustrated. I don't know what to say. I, I ask and they say we're good, and then they get the conities, and then I'm like, oh, my gosh, we're over.
The whole point of my frustration with this council, this administration, for the past year, is that they just did that work in October, not knowing that we had the money.
Okay, wait, this isn't her stuff, what we're talking about?
No, she's not. Oh, I know, I know. Both things happened in October. We've gotten money wasted and that.
Okay, I guess we refer the bond to committee also, council members, for additional information. We need to move forward with it.
Follow him.
Number five.
Follow, follow.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, sir. Mr. President, is there a motion to close this meeting?
7:15.
And, Mr. President, would you like to start?
7:15.
Our next meeting will start 7:15. Thank you, colleagues.
It's 7:29, December 6th, 2023. I'm going to call this meeting of the common council to order. Clerk, please call their board.
Aiello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Urban, Beatrice Williamson, Classimo Testa, Debrango, Gleimi, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment's silence for the deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is the minutes previous meeting.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
All right, the minutes, thank you. The minutes have been posted to E Code 360 for the public and the council to view. There's been a motion on the floor to accept those minutes and waive, it's been seconded by Burmaster already, thank you, and waive the reading of the minutes. Is anyone opposed? Okay, moving on. The next order of business is public hearing, to which we have no pieces of legislation or issues to hear, so the public hearing is now closed. Public comment period. Jared Tough. The common council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Jared Tough. I just want to keep reminding this committee administration and the city that, you know, though the constitution and city law and state laws, all of them are very beautiful, but we notice a lot of people can use their position to do personal things to harm others and just violate people's rights. Again, I'll bring up, as in last year, when Melissa Scorrentino, the clerk, denied me service and kicked me out of the, the, the office just for a prayer that I said. And I also witnessed, you know, all And I also witnessed, you know, all my life, you know, I'm going to be fifty in like a year and a half, and I, I used to go down and watch Judge Guermonde, and you could see the difference, that how the crimes are treated between a black person and a white person. The black person would get harsher crimes, and look where he's sitting, and look where she's sitting, they're right there, you know? And that's this committee, and, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I am gonna look and see what you're going to do as mayor, you know, as far as my community, that, that seems to be stolen from me, you know, Corin Hill and our people, you know, and given to the immigrants, and, we just want to make sure that, you know, we get this money coming in as far as block grants, and you don't do what the other mayor did, because we consider him a corrupt mayor, and he gave it to the Carbone family, and they were already wealthy. And far as pilot, you know, money, just, you know, we want to make sure that you're going to do what's right, and that's why I keep reminding you and this committee, you know, I would ask this committee, well, I did ask many times for it, to investigate the white supremacy that's going on in the city, and it, nothing, you know, nothing happens, you know, they just turn their head the other way, because, you know, you can't ask white people to investigate white supremacy, you know what I mean? But I just want to remind you that, you know, we're here, I haven't talked to mine, because I feel I have more power in my pinky than all of you put together. I could have all this filled up with my people, I could have the courtyard out there filled up, but that, what's that going to do? I feel that's going to cause more division, you know what I mean? And I want to give this committee a chance to do something, because once there's a division start, you know, once I really, really put in my head that we should be divided, I mean, I do understand that, you know, people are different, we're all humans, just like there's a polar bear, there's a grizzly bear, they're both from different places, and they don't live amongst each other, but we're humans. So I feel that, you know, once I get it in my head that, you know, we shouldn't be living amongst each other, I am going to be preaching to my community division line, and, but I don't want to do that, because, you know, I feel that we should at this moment, you know, there should be equality amongst all of us. And that's all I want to say, I just want to remind you that, you know, we're still looking and we're still watching, and we do feel that we are way under the social ladder, and we just want equality, and it doesn't matter if you hire a few black people or have a few black people here, you know, because they could be discriminated toward, towards their own race, you know? But we're watching, and I just really would like you to do something to help my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, next and last speaker this evening, Carol Gable, please go forward. The common council has provided you a copy of section three two four four, public comment period rule, are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Please state your name, and you may begin, thank you.
Sure, I'm Carol Gable, good evening, I live and work in Utica. A number of us are here today, am I, can you hear me, am I loud enough?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
To express our appreciation for the great, great work Celeste Friend has done for the city of Utica, serving on city council these past four years. Her efforts led to significant improvements in our citizens' ability to be informed about city government and to understand decisions and actions made which impacted their lives. Her regular newsletters to constituents regarding what was happening in the city and when meetings were scheduled were really well read and appreciated. Her contacts with Utica voters provided much-needed information about the concerns and the needs of residents in all of its neighborhoods. We are also grateful for her leadership in making Utica a more beautiful and environmentally sustainable city. Her work promoting things such as flood mitigation, public garden and art space improvements, municipal electric cars, and bike lanes and other complete street recommendations were greatly appreciated by all of us, as these are the types of things that thriving cities and towns throughout this country are doing right now. She shared the unfortunate truth that Utica has an unacceptable level of lead poisoning in children, which causes all sorts of damage to their brain and nervous system. Cities such as Rochester, Syracuse, Buffalo have all taken steps getting lead out of their homes, and Utica needs to do the same. So thank you, Celeste, for the time, the energy, the passion you put into getting so many of us involved in making Utica a better city, for all, and for showing us its potential for greatness. We hope the new administration will continue all of this good work, and we commit ourselves to staying engaged, as there is, ooh, much that can be done to create a better Utica that provides opportunities for everyone here to live their best lives. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Thank you. That concludes, that concludes public comment this evening, thank you very much. We don't have any common council guests this evening, nor do we have communications from the mayor. Reports on the city officers, Chief Ingersoll, thank you.
No report today.
Thank you, Corporation Council?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Thomas?
Nothing to report.
Deputy Chief Noonan?
I just wanted to comment that, I wanted to commend the officers last night that responded to an incident on Cottage Place. There was a, we had another barricaded subject situation, unfortunately, it was a mental health situation, but there was a, the officers demonstrated a great deal of restraint, an individual actually pointed what appeared to be a handgun at them on several different occasions. You know, they utilized their training and their equipment, for which I have to thank the council for providing funding for both, to remedy the situation, and, you know, we were able to resolve it in a timely and safe manner, and right now, she's getting the help that she needs, but I just wanted to recognize the officers and thank the council for, for providing us with that, those important, you know, that important training and that, and that equipment. We actually utilized our barricade, we had hostage negotiators there. We had to use less than lethal force, because she did come out of the house, again, pointing the handgun at, at the officers. So thankfully, it was resolved.
Wasn't it hostages, correct?
No, so, but we, no, but, so negotiator, they're called hostage negotiators, but they engaged her in conversation to try to get her out of the house. Initially, there was an individual in there with her, we were able to get her out. There was tenants on the second floor, we were able to get them out, and she, you know, we isolated her in the house by herself, until we were able to, we had to use tear gas to get her to come out of the house, but, but it was all, you know, it ended well, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that you did, because it could have been a much worse situation. Commissioner Phillips?
I commend the police officers too, I could imagine doing their job. But I think the purpose of report is for me as codes commissioner to kind of talk about some of the things that we're seeing in the city, from the eyes of my codes officer, so the common council can consider how they could potentially resolve them. So there's three issues that have come up this year more than they have any year that I've been, and it's, it's, it's things that I think the common council should look for. Number one is temporary structures, things like tents, things that are easily collapsible, that pop up in the city. Right now, it's a temporary structure, it's not part of the building code, right? What do we, what do we do with those, what authorities do we need to have, what do you want to see done? That might be something to think about. The other one is the sharing economy, people drive Medicaid cabs, tow trucks, lift cars, from their homes to do something else. Right now, the way we treat it with the law is, if the transaction, the business isn't occurring at your home, you leave your home to do business somewhere else, just because it might be a work vehicle, it's not a zoning violation. And then we get calls from neighbors complaining that they're running some kind of business out of their home. And the third thing is, the, the commercial vehicles parked in residential neighborhoods. There's some laws that we have to combat them, whether it's food trucks, buses, tow trucks. There's the vehicle weight laws, but there's not really a, a strong governance of what vehicles are allowed to park in a residential driveway, and that's caused some issues. So those are three issues to think about, happy holiday season, we'll see you again before Christmas.
Thank you. Engineering, you're here, would you, would you like to report anything?
Did I report it or wait for you to bring it up?
What's that? Oh, no, we did that in the previous meeting.
Not in the last question, thank you, sorry.
Thank you very much.
You did good stuff.
That concludes, let me make, yeah, no, I got to go on, that concludes all the officers of the city. We do have a cash report.
Cash report for October two thousand and twenty-three is fifty-seven point six four one million received and filed.
Thank you very much. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals, first district, council member Katie Ial, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah, I just want to thank the police department again for last night on Cottage Place, it was, I'm glad everybody was able to make it out safe, and you just did a great job, I think, diffusing and keeping the neighbors and tenants informed, and, so thank you for that. And then the other thing I wanted to let people know is, earlier this month, not to steal some of your remonstrances, I'm sure, Councilman Burmaster, but we got to go to the Starting Line Apartments over by Anculver and meet with DePaul, and just hear what that organization does, and this apartment complex, I think, is just, should be the example for a lot of the apartment complexes in the area. I know, you know, I get a lot of concerns from Lillian Cooper, and we hear it from Glow Mill and all over, but the staff at this, yeah, housing has for their people and lower income, and just the resources available, creates such a different environment, and they see far less crime, far less nuisances, far less, just everything, and the people are just better taken care of. So if anybody else is interested in learning more about them, I highly recommend reaching out to you, DePaul, and I've just, it was really a great experience, so I'm glad they met with us. And that's all I wanted to share today, thank you.
Thanks. Second district, council member Robert Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, first of all, belated happy birthday. I'm sorry, I just got the notification today, I would have, happy birthday. And I've got a few things that the West Utica Neighborhood Association has done in the, in the last month. I kind of jotted them down, so I won't, won't forget them, because I'm getting of that age where I don't remember so well. So they went out and they, they collected some food for the vets. On Monday, they, they did a, a tree lighting, it was the, the first one in, in West Utica. It was on the emphasis on inclusion of awe in building a better community within West Utica, and I want to thank the DeBunchang family for donating the beautiful tree. It was a nice event, there was twenty-five, thirty people showed up, raining, cold, didn't matter, had a good time, hot chocolate, cookies. It was, it was good, it was nice to see, if you get a chance, it's, it's still up across from Addison Miller and, on O'Brien. It's kind of nice that the community got involved in that. They, they also collected some toys for the YMCA for the donation tree event. On next Wednesday, of course, Katie brought up that they're going to be a meeting at Five Points for DePaul, they're going to come in and talk about their apartments. And I think it would be a great asset for, for West Utica to, to have the people get involved and listen to them. We, we did have a couple hours that we went over and they took us on a tour, and it was very informative, and I was really impressed with the apartments on Culver Ave. And I'm really looking forward to that, and I guess I've covered my bases, and, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Third district, council member Celeste Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, the only thing I want to discuss is that I'm getting, this is sort of for Anthony, I'm getting multiple texts from people saying that the YouTube is not working, you're getting them as well? Okay, so I don't, I don't know, I just wanted to make somebody aware that it seems not to be working, so, okay, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fourth district, and majority leader, Craig Gill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to add on to my colleague about the Don DeBunchang and all the Christmas trees he passes out every year. We're looking probably around over hundreds and hundreds of Christmas trees that he donates every year throughout the city, in different areas in the county. Between him and his wife, they go through a lot of mud and a lot of hexals, and a lot of chainsaw blades going through a lot of the trees, and they make a lot of people happy out there. And a lot of Christmas trees, and a lot of joy that they spread, giving hundreds and hundreds of Christmas trees throughout the community every year. So once again, I'd like to thank the DeBunchangs for all their Christmas spirit, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fifth district, council member Venice Urban, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to say thank you to all the department ads for the city. I call them up every now and then and bug them, and they always answer the phone, and any complaints I have, or anything that the residents need, any complaints, they usually take care of them pretty quick, so I'd like to thank them for that. Second over there, fifty-four had their Christmas luncheon last Saturday up at the parkway. And they had a bunch of baskets, I didn't win anything. And I told them, I think it's because about four years ago, I won a fifty-inch TV, and they were yelling, all the seniors were yelling, give it back? And I didn't, so. So I haven't won a basket in like five years, so, that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you. Sixth district, council member Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. President, I just want to reiterate on DePaul, since it's in my area, I wish you guys called me, I would have went on the tour with you guys. But I've dealt with them in the four years I've been on the council, got them a bus stop, that they, they were, people were asking for a bus stop, and different things, I've been in there. The only thing that, I'm not sure you guys reiterated on, their clientele is a little bit different than the clientele that's going in the other apartments. The Councilman Klasimo Testa will probably tell you she was very instrumental in when that building was being put in there. Most of their residents are disabled vets, people going through rehab, and they have counseling there, and it's great, you're absolutely right, the way they run things. But it's a little bit different than, say, the Finish Line Apartments, which is open to lower-income housing, so. I just wanted to say that, and anytime you guys go on anything in my area, I'd love you to let me know, so I could be a part of that too, appreciate it, thank you. Oh, one last thing, I'm sorry, a week from tomorrow morning, at ten thirty, we will be dedicating the firehouse, the lettering is up today for Chief Brooks, we all pass that, so you guys will all be getting an invitation out on Monday, it'll be going out like through the clerk. But I'd like to see everybody come if they could, if possible, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman-at-large and minority leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
I have nothing to pass, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman-at-large, Samantha Klasimo Testa.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to mention today that the elementary school that I teach at Watson Williams had some wonderful guest speakers today, Chief Ingersoll, Deputy Chief Noonan sent his police officer, Officer Sweet was there, so he got to see me twice in one day, which is pretty sweet, right? And Yvonne Urban, county legislator, so I appreciate everybody that comes every year, and I try and switch it up a little bit, so that everybody has the opportu, oh. I tried to block him out of my memory sometimes, not, Councilman Beatrice was there, he did, he did read to a fourth grade class, I, they called him Mr. Buttrice. So I think that they got a little enjoyment out of him, as, as I do, on most days. So I just want to thank you very much for, you know, coming, and it's, it's, it's nice to see the, the members of the community outside of the aspect of, of politics sometimes, you know, coming there and, you know, softening it up a little bit in front of elementary students, so it's always appreciated, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. President Proten, council-at-large Frank DeBrango, you have the floor.
Nothing to add, I just wanted to, you know, Joe already said it, I think, on the thirteenth at ten thirty AM, Central Firehouse, five fifty-two Bleecker Street, I believe, that's the address, yeah. They're going to dedicate the building to Chief Brooks, and I plan on being there, and I'm sure we're going to have a lot of dignitaries there. Well-deserved, very community-oriented fellow, and he was actually my on-duty chief for first five years of me on the department way back in nineteen eighty-nine, when I started, so. Well-deserved, so, that's all, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, all I'll say this evening is thank you all in the room for coming, to get another council. So moving on to legislation, hold ordinance one, the E and A transfer.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
Mr. President, may I have the floor briefly, which one, what, this is about ordinance number one?
Yes.
Okay, this is for the.
So I will read the title real quick, and then you may have the floor. Who moved this again?
Mr. President?
Miola, Friend, thank you. This is an E and A transfer, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year, from various accounts within the police lines, admin rentals, admin comp equipment, supply, division auto supplies, monies totaling ninety-five thousand dollars are moving into the police supply division repairs.
Nineties adopted.
So you're good? Oh, okay, all right.
Mr. President, motion, motion moved, Mr. Zeca, his commissioner of deeds.
Okay, says the commissioner of deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to commissioner of deeds, in and for the city of Utica, New York, within the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, it is James A. Zeca, your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, ordinance number three, bond ordinance, like to refer to committee.
This is actually, and I'll, I'll speak on behalf of the two bond ordinances, one for the paving, and the other one for, for this bond issuance. I'm just going over some calculations, and I, there, there definitely needs to be some things clarified before we vote on this in, at all. And a couple of things relate to our total payments for our bond debt service, based on our bond debt payment from last year, and then this budget fiscal report that was prepared to us by Fiscal Advisors Marketing. So the total budget impact, according to this, is from the April first to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, it says a total impact of two-point-five million dollars. But then I go and I look at the payment for the bond debt schedule for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, and it states that the payment's only five-point-four million. In regards to that, there's about a one-point-three million dollar difference of payments that are going to be due coming next budget year. to be due, um, coming next budget year in April.
Mm-hmm.
And I just think that that needs to be clarified, um, because according to this, it says that, um, the total impact, again, would be $2.5 million and I don't see that towards the payment from the...
You're talking about the paving bond, the total impact of 2.5?
Yeah, according to the budget calculations, that, that, that we are giving to us.
Yeah.
Now, we got a bond debt schedule that was given...
Do you have the audit in front of you?
Huh?
Is that the audit?
No, whatever they prepared for us with the bond debt schedule.
Okay.
That was actually attached to it from the fiscal advisors.
Right.
Um, so I just, I guess I'm kind of wondering where the discrepancy is of that $1.3 million on top of that total payment that would be due towards the 24, 25 year. Um, so I would appreciate an explanation based on that from the 20, the 2023 bond ordinance, you know, from the January bans of 2019, 2020, 2022, and then the 2023, because according to this, they have the, the paving projects in there and again, you know, through the ARPA funding in our budget, we approved an additional $2 million for paving, not that we approve it, that was obviously just in addition to that $79 million budget that we approved last year. So I just, if we could get clarification on where that $1.3 million discrepancy is, um, before we meet on the, the 20th.
So, Mr. President, I just want to state, what I've requested is that they outline all of the paving that happened this year and all of the paving that happened last year and then connect all the funding sources to what was done, whether the, uh, were ARPA transfers, uh, bond, uh, you know, ordinances, you know, and actually, you know, going out for bond or, uh, monies from CDVG, in other words, starting from the actual projects. Because the issue is right now, starting from the accounts, considering that they're not actually reconciled appropriately, um, I'm requesting that we start from the projects and then connect the actual appropriate payments, uh, from different accounts to that so that we can trace this back through to the budgets so that we can figure this out. Just telling you what I'm requesting because it's, it's very difficult to figure it out from the actual accounts because not only were they not appropriately, um, used at this point, uh, there were also overages.
Right, and, and, and that, and that's, that's fine for the ARPA projects even, even with it?
No, I'm talking about capital as well.
Yeah, and, but I guess, I guess, even, even, yeah, even with the issuance, but, I mean, to have a $1.3 million discrepancy on top of our total budgetary amount of what's already impacted, because it's already an increase of, from last year, that, from last year was, yeah, we, we appropriated $4.2 million. This year, they're stating that they want to appropriate 5.4 million, but according to this fiscal report that they gave us, there's $2.5 million total. So there's still a $1.3 million discrepancy towards the bond debt schedule that we were just given today compared to the fiscal report that we have here today.
Mr. President, we asked, um...
That also lines up with what I was told a week and a half ago that we have a $1.3 million overage, um, and in part, that's why they wanted to bond the paving. I'm, I'm just telling you what I was told because I'm starting to ask because next year I have to...
Right, and I guess, so if, even if you had the overage of 1.3 million, that wouldn't count towards our bond debt schedule.
Correct. What I'm saying, that's interesting.
Well, we have to get the numbers from our, our, uh, controller's office and move forward with that, so I think we can entertain this.
Mr. President, I have the, I have the floor, with all due respect. I mean, I, I just wanted to find, I, I just wanted to finalize that, even saying, to, to counterpoint what you're saying on top of that, I don't know how you get one report from the same building that are two separate monetary amounts that need to be appropriated for bonding.
We have to have the expenditures, I think, Samantha.
I mean, that's, that's, that's a...
That's why we're having a committee meeting.
No, I know, but I just, I wanted just to point out that for that too, that needs to be explained because that was given in addition to this bond debt schedule, so.
I mean, just the paving alone is a conversation.
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Uh, you made a motion to refer this to committee. Let me, uh, please read the, uh, title of this so we can refer it to committee, please. This is a bond ordinance dated December 6th, 2023, bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1.12 million in serial bonds of the city of Utica, Oneida County, New York, to finance the costs of certain capital projects. Any opposed to referring this to committee? Okay, it's been referred to committee. Very much.
Mr. President, ordinance number, let's see, four we're on, the, uh, zoo.
Resolution.
Resolution number four, it's a zoo contract, according to, um, Charlie Brown, he didn't have time to, uh, do the amendments, it will be at our next council meeting, so I'd like to refer to committee, sir.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Mr. President, ordinance number five, another bond ordinance, this is the one I think has to do with paving, I'd like to also refer that to committee, sir.
Second.
All right, hold on. Before I finalize that one, I just wanted to check something. Okay, any opposed? Okay, ordinance number five, bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of $2.5 million in serial bonds of the city of Utica, Oneida County, New York, to finance the cost of street paving projects, is now referred to committee. Thank you.
Our next one's ordinance number six, E&amp;A transfer, I'd like to move on that, Mr. President.
Okay, this is an E&amp;A transfer for the 23, 24 fiscal year to cover unexpected pool invoice for unexpected electrical repairs. This is a total of $42,000. Your votes.
Nine e's adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number seven into committee, sir. It's the Intersections Where Stops Report.
Okay, this is intersections where stops required on the eastern curb line of front 2601 Dunham Road, controlling eastbound traffic and the northwest corner of Traffic Island at Eastwood Avenue, controlling westbound traffic. Well, he already made the motion, I want a second. All right, any opposed? Same committee.
Mr. President, ordinance number eight, yield signs required in that same intersection, I'd like to refer to committee.
Ordinance number eight, any opposed? Same committee.
And, Mr. President, same intersection, ordinance number nine, no parking at all times, also refer to committee, sir.
Second. Any opposed? Same committee.
No other business, Mr. President, I'd like to call for a re...
I got one saved, Ron. You have the floor.
I, you know, I haven't got a department head budget and it's December.
Yes.
And I'm curious about that, I haven't received anything and we're getting ready to do this upcoming in the next month or two for the next...
Correct.
I haven't received anything.
A wish list, you mean, Mr. Council?
December 15th would be typically the last date when we would get those.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up, that's all.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Motion to close, Mr. President.
Ask the budget director.
[laughing][1766.62]